We're here for the regular scheduled meeting in Birmingham City Council, City of Birmingham, virtual meeting, April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty one at nine thirty A M. Before we, uh, we're gonna have our invocation, we have scripture by Counselor Hoyt and our invocation by Counselor Hilliard. And this is the ten year anniversary of the April twenty seventh tornadoes of two thousand and eleven. So with that, I've asked Counselor Hoyt to provide us scripture and Counselor Hilliard to provide the invocation. So good morning, Counselor Hoyt, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning to this, on this body. As we remember those persons who, uh, and lives were interrupted by the storms of April twenty seventh, two thousand and eleven, and so it's been ten years, but I wanna say this morning that God is faithful. It's not only faithful, but he's everlasting, and so we thank God for him this morning. And I wanna share two, uh, short passages of scripture, and I hope that it blesses those who are listening and as we, remember those persons, uh, this morning in the devastation of Pratt City. But it says, this is limitations, um, three, uh, limitation, third chapter, thirty one through thirty three. It says, for we, for no one is cast off by the Lord forever. Though he brings grief, he will show compassion. So great is his unfailing love, for he does not willingly bring affliction or grief to anyone. Isaiah fifty one and eleven says, and the ransom of the Lord shall return. And come to Zion with singing. Everlasting joy shall be upon their heads, and they shall obtain gladness and joy. And sorrow and sighing shall flee away. This is a word of God for the people of God and those who are there meditate upon it day and night. Thank you.
Counselor Hilliard, you're gonna do our invocation and be pledged allegiance by Counselor Williams.
Yes, sir, I wanna thank my distinguished colleague Stephen Reverend Stephen Hoyt for that great passage that he read. It warms my heart and it really, uh, makes us feel special on knowing that we're celebrating the ten year anniversary of survival and renewal. May we bow our heads. Gracious Father, thank you for the survival and renewal of our area, Father God, through that great tornado. Father God, thank you for people like Bessie Brewster, Father God, who lost her life, Father God, while helping her family, Father God. She was a church-going woman, Father God, she was a loving mother, Father God, an aunt, Father God. We thank you for all the people, Father God, who gave their lives for a rebirth and a renewal for something great, Father God. New homes are being built, new parks are being built, new storm shelters came that will save thousands of lives, Father God. They gave their lives so that many may be saved. So even at a time like this, Father God, we want to celebrate them, Father God. We want to celebrate them and thank them, Father God, for protecting so many people in the future. We have new alert systems, Father God, we know when storms are coming faster, Father God. This is what they provided through the storm, Father God, so thank you for the renewal of everything that is going on, Father God. This we ask, in Jesus' name, let us all say, amen.
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 All right, attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Clerk, how are you? Or Madam Clerk? How you doing, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
All right, the roll call.
Ma'am.
Okay. Counselor number Abbott.
Present.
Counselor member Hilliard.
Present.
Counselor number Hoyt.
Present.
Counselor number O'Quinn. Counselor number O'Quinn.
Present.
Counselor member Smitherman. Counselor member Smitherman. Counselor member Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counselor member Wood.
Present.
President Potem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning, and Counsel President Parker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, all righty, uh, need approval of the minutes for October twentieth, two thousand and twenty.
So move.
Approval.
Second.
All in favor, let it be done by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all righty, and the minutes are not ready for September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty, November third, two thousand and twenty three, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty one. Going to, uh, read, uh, that the Council of the City of Birmingham, having reviewed the agenda presented for this meeting on April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty one, hereby finds that the proposed actions contained on the agenda to be considered at this meeting constitute essential minimum functions of this body. Make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Gotta get back into the swing of things.
Yes, ma'am, take your time, Madam Clerk, take your time.
Okay, Counselor Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor number Hilliard.
Aye.
Counselor number Hoyt.
Yes.
Counselor number O'Quinn.
Yes.
Counselor number Smitherman.
Aye.
Counselor member Williams.
Yes.
Counselor number Woods. Counselor member Woods. President Potem Alexander.
Aye.
And Counsel President Parker.
Yes, ma'am, yah, okay. All righty, um, we move now to our consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
Okay. The consent agenda begins on page six with item number ten. And then we go over to page thirteen with item number fifteen. Page fourteen, items sixteen and seventeen. Page fifteen, items eighteen, nineteen, twenty and twenty one. Page sixteen, items twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. Page seventeen, items twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven. On page eighteen, items twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty and thirty one. Page nineteen, items thirty two, thirty three, thirty four and thirty five. On page twenty, item thirty six. And on, we have on our addendum, uh, item thirty nine, which requested we added. Uh, on the second page of the addendum, item forty and forty one. On the third page, item forty four. Fourth page, item forty five, forty six and forty seven. And I believe on item number forty five, the amount has changed, is that fourteen thousand dollars, President Parker?
Yes, ma'am, fourteen five.
Fourteen five?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and on the second addendum that I sent you this morning, items forty eight and forty nine.
Okay, all right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, are we all good with the consent agenda? Uh, let me read this, uh, all items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearings or request. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read, all other matters will be announced by reading the item number only, all public hearings will be announced, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counsel Williams and Counselor Abbott.
Yes, ma'am, we're ready. We're ready.
Counselor Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Hilliard.
Aye.
Counselor Hoyt.
Yes.
Counselor O'Quinn.
Yes.
Counselor Smitherman.
Aye.
Counselor Williams.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
President Potem Alexander.
Aye.
And President Parker.
Aye, okay, consent agenda is approved, uh, Counsel Williams, you just wanna take on over the council meeting, uh, for a little while, or?
Yeah, 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 just so, just I wanna be, uh, let everybody know that we have, um, of all of these liquor licenses that we're about to go through, um, all of them did go through the Neighborhood Association. I'm gonna send y'all a separate email that has the, the vote, the specific votes. There is one, one of these items, and that's going to be item seven that was not approved by the Neighborhood Association. However, all the other ones were approved, so I just wanna go ahead and let you guys know that. Um, all right, uh, Madam Clerk, item one.
Now, item one is actual zoning ordinance, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, you know what, I got confused, I was looking at the, okay, if we can do one, I'm sorry, please forgive me.
Okay. All right, item number one is an, okay, item one is an ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC twenty twenty dash zero 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 twenty six, to change zone district boundaries from R three, single-family district, to Q D five, qualified multiple dwelling district, to allow the construction of townhomes filed by Corey Johnston, the owner for the properties located at forty four twenty four, forty four twenty eight, forty four thirty two, and forty four forty six, Montavalla Road, and situated in the northeast quarter of section thirty four, township seventeen, South Range Two West, in the hearing of all interested parties. This is a public caring item, any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council, full council, using the link that is listed on the, the agenda. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. Audio conference, United States toll number is one four one five six five five zero 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 two. The access code is one eight seven six four zero five one eight five. If you are calling via telephone, please press the star three to request to speak to this agenda item.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, Mr. Gambrell.
Need a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Move item.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gambrell, good morning, sir.
Yes, sir, good morning, uh, this is Tim Gambrell, serving as chief planner for the city of Birmingham. In this case, this is KZAC two thousand and twenty dash twenty six, in the Crestline Neighborhood. It is a proposal to construct twenty three new townhomes. The subject properties are two point four two acres and are currently zoned R three, single-family district. The budding adjacent, the subject property to the north is zoned R three, single-family, and Q R five, multifamily district. To the south, it is currently zoned R three, single-family district, to the east of the property is zoned R two, single-family. To the west of the location is zoned R three, single-family, the subject properties are mostly surrounded by single-family zoning districts. Uh, the applicant's proposed plan for the subject properties is for a private, gifted community of twenty three townhomes. Each townhome will have a two-car garage and parking for visitors. Uh, the pro, this project will replace an abandoned church building, asphalt parking lot, and two existing single-family homes. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as residential low district. The residential low district is designed to allow for single-family residential development. At a variety of densities, these districts may be applied to preserve the character of developed residential areas that are predominantly single-family in nature, and recommended to be the same by the comprehensive plan. However, the uses in this district include single-family homes, schools, churches, and neighborhoods serving public uses. The proposed resoning request is not consistent with the city's long-range land use plan. The applicant's proposed site plan shows twenty three townhomes as a multifamily development on four individual lots that will be required to be re-subdivided by the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission. This proposal meets the density requirements and lot width requirements. The parking requirement for two or more bedrooms at one point for dwelling in it for a combined total of thirty five parking spaces, development. The development total parking is fifty eight. Uh, the additional parking spaces as proposed, uh, shall comply with the engineering guidelines for excessive parking spaces. When a development includes parking in excess of the required max, maximum required, impervious paving systems are required for those parking spaces with, which exceed the maximum number of spaces allowed. Uh, the executive committee of the Crestline Neighborhood Association held a meeting on November twenty third, two thousand and twenty to review the proposed project and voted to not recommend the request at that time. The vote was one approved and four to deny. Uh, they did include a list of queue conditions in case, uh, the case didn't move forward, and those queue conditions limit, uh, or prohibit about thirty one uses that are listed in the zoning ordinance. Uh, this location is in the Southern Area Framework Plan area, which is in progress, and an implementation committee has not been formed. Um, the neighborhood met at a second virtual WebEx meeting on Tuesday, February nine, two thousand and twenty one. As a result of that meeting, the neighborhood voted to approve the proposed resoning request with some additional queues. The vote was twenty three approved and seven denied. Uh, the queue conditions, um, included the same prohibited uses, but then it also included, um, further conditions. I'm gonna go ahead and read those off. The townhouse, the townhomes fronting Gladstone Avenue in Montavalo shall orient their front facade to those streets. Uh, number three, any fence wall constructed shall comply with the requirements in Title One, Chapter Four, Section Five of the zoning ordinance, walls and fences. Sidewalk and street trees shall be required along Gladstone and Montavalo. Architectural features mimicking front facades shall be required for any building that is not reoriented to the front on Gladstone Avenue or Montavalo. And all exterior light for security and aesthetics shall be required to downlight and not encroach on the neighboring property. Uh, the zoning advisory committee met at its regular scheduled meeting on February sixteen, two thousand and twenty one, and voted to recommend approval of the applicant's resoning request with the same queue conditions as recommended by the neighborhood on February nine, including those that I just read. Uh, the planning and zoning committee met at its regular scheduled meeting on March third, two thousand and twenty one, and voted to recommend approval of the zoning, the applicant's zoning request with the same queue conditions from the ZAC on February sixteen. And that concludes the report.
Mr. President.
Uh, yes, sir.
Do you mind if I ask Mr. Gambrell a technical question about what he just wrote?
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Uh, Tim, a quick question for you, uh, if, if, I think the intent on, on these, which was, I did not hear in the queue conditions, is that there, the neighborhood does not desire these condos to become apartments? Is there any way we could queue out in that zoning ordinance, um, the ability for them to build apartments rather than condos?
Yes, sir, um, they're not currently listed in the list of prohibited uses. Uh, don't see apartments listed, so, um, what you would have to do is, uh, we would have to amend the ordinance, and in order to do that, we would have to refile the ordinance so that it could be properly advertised with that queue. I believe, uh, we've been instructed not to add queues at council meetings, so we would just have to re-advertise, uh, the case with that queue in order to do that.
So that's fine, but I do remember where we have added queue in during council meetings before, is there?
Yeah, we've, we've been advised by the, uh, uh, Office of City Attorney that there are previous precedents and legal cases, uh, that require us to advertise, uh, the ordinance, you know, as it's adopted, or adopt an ordinance as it's advertised. And so in order to include that queue, we would need to re-advertise the case.
What's the process in that, Mr. Gambrell, just out of curiosity?
I mean, we would just go through the same process, I guess, uh, next week's, well, if, if you decide, you know, depending on what you decide to do today, um, you know, we would just submit the item again tomorrow or next week and set, uh, a public hearing for about three to four weeks into the future.
Okay, it'll be about a month before the, the.
Probably around first, I think, yeah.
You said when?
I believe the eventual public hearing would be on June first.
Okay, okay, okay.
All right.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, I've been around a long time, and, um, these are new rules. This council has to finally say so. Um, that's a part of our judicial area, uh, fiduciary responsibility. And if this council decides that it wants to add queue condition at this level, then I think the council can do that, although I'm not inclined, uh, to suggest that we do that now. Because I think you need to go back and talk to the developer, whoever the person is, to engage them, but, you know, um, last I checked, we have not, uh, negated our responsibility, and neither do we acquiesce, you know, from, from doing our job. This is the final, you know, I mean, otherwise you can make decisions and commit it and, uh, and go on about your business, but we have an opportunity as a council to weigh in on any item that comes before the council. And I've been here long enough to know that we've always amended, uh, at the council meeting. And, and with the same law department.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Gambrell, one more question for you, would apartments be allowed under this zoning, the D five zoning?
Yes, sir, it would be. And if I could, you know, just comment, like I said, I think that we've been advised by the City Attorney's Office, Office of City Attorney, that, you know, if we do add a queue here without it being advertised, it could be challenged in court, and the precedent in the past is that those cases would be found to be improper.
Okay, all right.
But we, uh, Mr. Gambrell, you know that.
Okay, we, we.
We have been in the past, we've been advised to change that policy.
Mr. President.
Okay, here, here's where we are. Let's, we'll take a footnote on that one, and I think Administrator Kid and Deputy Administrator McDaniel's, I'm sure we'll have some follow-up, uh, Chief, if that's okay, with the law department, and kinda get us on a good footing.
Mr. President.
For it. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, ye, yes, sir, Chief, yes, ma'am, uh, Ms. Abbott.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, chime in here and say that, you know, in order to protect the community, I think it's worth whatever we would have to pay to republish this, um, because I'm in agreement with Counselor Williams that the community was very concerned, this is R three, single-family zoning right now. And they did not want apartments, and the developer is proposing, I mean, we've all seen the plans, the developer is proposing townhomes. But we all know that sometimes developers change their minds as soon as they get their zoning and go off in another direction. We've seen it happen in the past, so I do believe that this is a good thing for us to do, and I'm, you know, I'm sorry it got left out, but, uh, it's, I, I believe it's worth the funds that it would take to re-republish this in order to protect the neighborhood and do what the residents are interested in seeing done in their community.
Okay, so, all right, so here's where we are, um, we can hear from the, uh, the applicant, and move forward, or, um, we can withdraw the item, we can refer to item back, uh, and then we could use this as an opportunity for, um, like I said, Administrator Kid and, and Deputy McDaniel's to have some continued conversations on how we move forward as relates to, uh, what Counselor Hoyt had mentioned about, uh, making amendments to the, um, you know, to the ordinance as before us as a body, um, and obviously it seems as though this item is probably, um, either needs to be withdrawn, or we can simply just delay it for a week, so, um, before we kinda go down that road, I'll just take a motion on the pledge of the council.
The applicant on our, uh, Q and A on the text on the side said that they would greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak. We have a real concern that we would like to discuss regarding a postponement, so can we just hear from them to see what, what they're?
Yeah, yeah, we will hear from applicant, uh, if they're on, and, uh, give us a brief overview of where you are, and after that, we'll take a sense of the council to see, uh, but those are some, um, issues that we need to work through, uh, being with Counselor Hoyt voiced, and also, um, with Counselor Abbott and Counselor Williams. So, good morning, sir, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. Parker, I'm doing well, hope everybody else is too, um, thank you so much for letting us speak. Um, and I'll try to be brief, um, we understand that there is a queue condition that you guys would like to add. Um, you know, we've been going through this process, as I'm sure everybody, or most of you know, for a little over two years, and, you know, multiple queue conditions have come up, and we're totally fine with all of them. And we're certainly a hundred percent fine with a queue condition, um, taking apartments, uh, off the board. We were not even aware that that was a, you know, a recommended, or a zoning option. Um, fee simple townhomes, not condominiums, have always been what we are proposing. Um, all that said, the main concern that we have is the fact that we have had to, um, due to, you know, COVID and postponements and continuations, um, I think we had to go to VAC three or four times. Uh, the church, Macklin Church, has been extremely patient with us, and, uh, they've been just great to work with. But we're at a point now with our due diligence period on the contract, that, um, another postponement, uh, if it's a week, that, we, I don't think we have an issue. If we go into a situation where we have to postpone for a month or so, it's going to make it, um, extremely difficult for us to make this, uh, development work, because we've had to, again, postpone so many times. Um, you know, it's obviously, you know, y'all, your decision as a board or city council about how this moves forward. Um, I just wanted to ask if there are any possible way that we, as the applicant, could proffer, um, to take that apartment zoning off the table? Could we, it could be out of covenant, anything at all where we might be able to move this forward today? And, um, that's really it, and, um, I'll throw it back to you, Mr. Parker.
Okay, all right, with that, what we can do is we can table item one, which will allow, uh, some time for, uh, everyone to kind of, uh, have some conversations and then come back with, uh, with, uh, with the, with the, I think, a solution, so, um, is that the sense of the council?
Mr. Parker, I mean, President Parker, it seems that we have a, between the two parties, that we have a, um, a consensus on this, um, on this one, uh, prohibited use, and. And, um,
So we're adding that, we're adding that item?
I think it can be added now. If the Law Department wants to over legalize it down the road on what we can and can't do and whatever, that's fine, but the, the two parties, which this would be also, this recording would be in court, the two parties are agreeing to this prohibited use. Um, and so I don't see it going to litigation, but if it does, it does. Um, and I, I agree with, uh, the developer, they have been through the wringer on this, having to go through Z A, ZAC three times. Um, and all sorts of nonsense that was, uh, that was, uh, put before them, uh, because of, uh, the ineptness of the ZAC. So, uh, I, I would like to make a motion that we pass this item with an additional prohibited use, uh, of no apartments.
All right.
I didn't, who, who made the second? I'm sorry. Okay, so this motion, so the motion we have before us right now is to amend, to add, uh, additional queue conditional.
Prohibited use apartments.
Okay, no apartments. Okay, so we're gonna take the emotional, I'm gonna take a vote.
Okay, before we do that, let's park that for a second. Uh, let me ask, are there any, uh, members of the public that would like to speak, uh, for this item four against this item? Uh, at this time, we'll, this is dealing with item number one. Um, it's located on, uh, forty-four twenty-four, uh, Montevallo Road. So, is there someone from the public that would like to speak to item number one? Miss Gardner, do we have anybody that you, you see this trying to log in? Okay. Yes, ma'am. I, I just wanted, hold, hold on. I'm just trying to make sure, Counsel Abbott, do we have anybody from the public wants to speak?
It does not appear so.
Okay, all right. Now it is before the council. So Counselor Williams, you make your mo-, you made your motion. Counselor Hillier, okay, add in the queue condition. Counsel Abbott, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if we should see the, uh, presentation by the applicant before we vote.
Okay.
You know, normally we, we have a presentation where they show us their plans and drawings and the full council knows what the project is.
We will do that. We just wanted to make sure, Counsel Abbott, that we were, uh, one week at the, uh, the, the additional, uh, queue condition. So the item is before us properly for that presentation and we worked through some of the other issues. So, um,
Counsel President Parker, we have Melissa Smiley, uh, that messaged me and she said, uh, please lay out item one on the table so that Mr. Gambrell can speak with our office and work out these issues.
Okay, who was that just speaking? I'm sorry.
This was Cody. I was relaying a message from Melissa Smiley.
Okay, uh, here's what we want to do. Go ahead and make your presentation. Um, we will then at that point table the matter and then bring it back. But go ahead and make your present, if you can make your presentation now. Uh, and then we will, um, act accordingly. So if you want to do that. Thirty smile is that? To hear the presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, yeah, if you just go ahead and make a presentation, uh, and then we will, we will, uh, we will deal with everything else as we move forward. Go ahead. Mr. Johnson, Johnston.
Yes, sir. Is there any way we can share our screens so you guys can see the?
Okay, so they're making their presentation, so he's gonna then lay it on the table.
Okay, everybody needs to mute their, um, hi, everyone mute. We're hearing some additional conversations. Okay, all right.
The share button.
Okay.
All right, um, we just tried to share our screen. Just want to confirm real quick that everybody can see the, the presentation on the screen? Okay, great. Um, well, again, as everybody knows, this is, um, forty-four twenty-four Montevallo Road and a couple of other parcels, um, that we are proposing to rezone to D five to build fee simple townhomes. Um, you know, the, there's two single-family homes on the property now, uh, on top of the old, in McIlwain Church. Uh, here is an overview of the existing property. You see in the yellow outline there, the subject property, most of it again being the asphalt parking lot and, and, um, abandoned church of the old McIlwain property. Um, toward north, um, are the McIlwain Cemetery, the Gladstone Town Home Development, uh, preschool partners, daycare, and across the street is the existing and in-use McIlwain Church. And as Mr. Gambrell, uh, mentioned as well, we also have single-family detached homes contiguous to our property as well. So, um, looking at our proposed layout, this is our design that we came up with sane engineering. Um, it's twenty-three townhomes, all with, um, attached garages. Um, we have some guest parking, believe twelve spots for guests. This would be a gated community. Um, and for the counselors', um, understanding of what we're proposing, it's very similar to what we, our company Cadco Homes did on Montclair Road, a development called Calton Hill, where we built single-family homes in the city of Mountain Brook and seventeen townhomes in the city of Birmingham. Um, we finished that project up, um, last year, um, relative to the townhomes, um, and it turned out great. Very successful there, so we'd like to bring that model, uh, to Montevallo Road. This is a, you know, conceptual rendering of essentially what we're proposing. This is actually a, um, rendering of the Calton Hill development. This is one of the buildings that we built, uh, there at Calton Hill. We like an old world architectural design, um, for the homes that we build. Um, what we have in mind is a painted brick facade with natural stone and cedar accents. We put decorative gas lights on all of our homes. Be but a very, very similar design to Calton Hill. Um, here's the landscape plan, it was part of the middle for, for the rezoning. Um, we put a lot of emphasis on creating, uh, very attractive entrance and aesthetic on, uh, Montevallo Road and also providing privacy for our end-user clients. And, um, you can see again, the number of the units.
Excuse me, Mr. Johnston, can you hold on for a second? Can you unmute? We have some additional conversations going on, so if everyone could mute. Counselor Hillier, can you mute your, Counselor Hillier? Counselor Hillier, Counselor Hillier. Hey, Counselor Hillier?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm so.
Mute your, thank you. Everyone, please mute your computers, please.
All right, thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson, excuse us for that.
Yes, thank you. Um, and so I was just going through the landscape plan. You can see on, um, the rear behind units sixteen through twenty-one, the type of, um, you know, landscaping trees buffer that we'd like to plant there. It's i- it's an extensive amount of landscaping to provide, again, some privacy, also for the single-family homes that, um, are in the rear of our development behind us. We've got some skyrocket junipers, um, laurels, cryptomeria. Um, so again, um, just something that will provide an aesthetic and a pleasing aesthetic and privacy for both our, um, clients and the surrounding neighbors. Um, again, just a little bit more to touch on the neighboring properties, uh, with what's surrounding us. Um, you know, with the Gladstone Town Home Development specifically, we feel like this is a good fit. That's right across the street from us. Um, so there's already kind of been a precedent set, uh, in the fact that we've got, you know, townhomes there, a church directly across the street. Um, like I said, the daycare. So from a zoning standpoint, we feel like this is kind of a good transitional zoning. Single-family detached, we feel doesn't quite make as much sense considering what the land uses are, um, surrounding our property. Um, you know, we want to also touch on the fact that while there are single-family detached homes on Montevallo Road, moving south from the subject property, we feel there's a distinct change in land use as Montevallo, uh, hits our subject property and moves north. Um, the, again, things that we already talked about, um, in terms of what surrounds us, but also as you continue moving north, you get into the Wind Dixie Grocery, a large shopping center, another church. And so once again, we feel from a transitional, uh, aspect, this, this, uh, design fits. Um, we talked about the adopted land use map and going through our planning and zoning and ZAC meetings. Um, again, this is, long story short, uh, it's just more talking about how we feel this fits. Um, and especially when you take into account the fact that the old McIlwain Church is dilapidated. It's been abandoned for quite some time now, years now. Uh, we feel like this would be how our development, proposed development compares to the Gladstone development across the street. Um, we are naming ours the legacy of Montevallo. Um, you know, the here's just a kind of a page talking about the differences and similarities. Our projected sales price, we believe, will be in the low four hundreds and up. Um, the Gladstone was in the two hundreds. Our lots are going to be sustain substantially wider, uh, than the Gladstone. Ours are gonna start at twenty-five feet. Um, theirs started at sixteen. Uh, as I'm sure everybody knows, the Gladstone does not include any garages, attached garages. It's all, um, surface parking. We will have garages for each of our homes. Um, ours is gated community and our homes are gonna be, um, a little bit bigger um, than what averages out at the Gladstone. So, you know, we've always said and, and, and believed that the Gladstone was done very well. It's a great-looking development, but what we are proposing is, is different in a lot of ways. And again, the Calton Hill model, um, is kind of what we're, uh, going for here. These are some examples of our Calton Hill townhomes on Montclair Road. Um, our average sales price there was five hundred eighty-four thousand. We started in the four hundreds and the last one we sold, um, was in the mid-seven hundreds. So again, a, a great, great model that, uh, turned out really well. We got some really great, uh, clients living in Calton Hill, um, and we're just really proud of the work that we were able to do there. Um, here are some interior shots of the Calton Hill townhomes. Again, um, similar finishes to what we were proposing. I'm just a bathroom, dining room, family room shots. And then to kind of finish up, just a little bit about our company. Um, you know, we started, my family started Cadco Homes over thirty-five years ago. We've built in every part of Birmingham that you, you know, could think of, um, with, uh, you know, I guess emphasis on over the mountain in the Birmingham area, uh, lately. Um, we're just a family company and again, we're, we're local. We don't build anywhere outside of Birmingham. And, um, you know, cadcohomes.com, if anybody wanted to see more information about us and what we're currently building, that's our website. Um, and that is, uh, really it for the presentation. So we'll just, uh, send it back to you, Mr. Parker.
All right, uh, there are questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, just one question. Is there a big wall around this development or is this just gated at the street?
So what we're proposing is a gate on the Gladstone, um, portion of, uh, the street and then a wall that would wrap, a masonry wall that would wrap around, um, Montevallo and as it turns back, um, I'm sorry, can we clear the screen again real quick? Is that possible? I just want to make sure everybody kind of understands, um, what I'm talking about. As the, uh, wall turns back by, where's the landscape? Lot eleven, um, there at the corner, uh, we want to transition to a wood fence. Um, but along Montevallo, we do want that to be masonry. Again, similar, uh, to keep kind of harping on it. Similar to what we did at Calton Hill. If anybody's driven by on, on Montclair Road, that is a masonry wall about eight feet tall that, um, is painted, it's painted brick and we landscape heavily in front of it. Put some creep, install some creeping fig, something green to grow, grow up it and give it a more of a green feel, landscape feel. Um, and I'll touch on the fact that in this habit, I believe, we discussed this at our last meeting. In order to do what we are proposing per this design, we will need to go to the BZA and ask for a few variances, one being the height of the wall that we would like to build. I believe it's four feet tall is what is allowed currently. What we would propose is an eight-foot wall. Um, so we would need to get that variance granted, but that is our plan, is to run a masonry wall down Montevallo and then transition it to wood.
So you're talking about an eight foot, this is gonna look like a prison from Montevallo Road.
Well, no, ma'am, again, if you would, uh, well, the landscape plan, you can see what we've got, um, there in terms of the amount of landscaping, the amount of trees and bushes that we want to plant. But, um, again, the, the Calton Hill, I think if anybody drove, drove by that, you can see how attractive it is. Um, it, it is not some kind of big gray, you know, cinder block wall. Um, it is the entrance there, um, a very attractive and, um, well landscaped, a well-kept up entrance. Um, so basically the Gladstone area where you would enter would be very similar to that at Calton Hill and it would continue down Montevallo Road. We're not gonna turn there. And then since it's very, you know, I guess easily viewed, very, you know, kind of in your face, if you will, we want to make sure that it does resemble the Calton Hill entrance and other entrances that we've done in the past. Um, so the whole thing is very heavily landscaped, it'll be irrigated, uh, we'll have landscape lighting, low voltage landscape lighting. Um, so at night when you drive by, you'll have, you know, those trees, um, you know, lit up and it all look very attractive. In no way do we think that this is going to resemble any kind of, you know, prison or, or anything like that.
Yeah, it's the high, it's the eight-foot height right on Montevallo Road that disturbs me because, you know, I don't, a lot of landscaping may help, but an eight-foot wall is, you know, is three feet taller than I am. I mean, it's a, it's an enormous wall and I realize the ordinance allows them, but not in a required front yard. I think four feet is the limitation on the required front yard. So,
Yes, ma'am.
That's just, and I'm familiar with your other location and it's, it's lovely, except that it's going up a mountain and so the wall doesn't seem seem so, it's so intrusive as this, which is a relatively level area, you know, right across from McIlwain Baptist Church. I, the eight-foot height is, is, just seems enormous. And of course, the zoning board of adjustment would have to allow you to do it, which is another, uh, you know, I mean, that's their purview, but that just the, the vi- the vision I have in my mind is not a good one.
Well, and like you said, it would need to be approved, um, by the BZA. You know, what we are thinking is obviously privacy and security for, you know, our client. Um, and, and two, if you're, if it's a four-foot wall or fence or whatever it may be, if this design is approved, um, and the BZA, you know, proves what, you know, a few variances we need. As a whole, what that would, uh, result in is if you drive by Montevallo, um, you know, you're looking into the backyards of each of these homes and we feel like if it were more private, um, it would be, you know, better looking. You never know what's gonna be in the backyards. Again, the privacy and security are the biggest things for us. Um, and that's why we're proposing it. That said, that is not the, you know, biggest thing that we, you know, want to get approved through the BZA. Um, the design in general is, uh, we think fits really well, but that's something that, you know, we'll see what happens. And if the BZA says no, then we can make something very attractive work there. Um, we just feel that that's the best option.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you for answering my question.
Shouldn't, Mr. Parker? Mr. President, my good.
Yes, sir.
Hi, oh, guys, on, uh, it was my, on this drawing, I don't see, on this landscape drawing, I don't see a sidewalk. It was my understanding that there was going to be a sidewalk installed along Montevallo Road.
Yes, that's correct. And we, we, um, you know, offered that, um, I think it was brought up at one of the previous meetings, if we'd be willing to do that. And we said absolutely, we think that would be a great addition to the development. And so I think when this landscape plan was drawn, it may have been prior to those discussions, uh, but we'll definitely go of the rezoning, we would want, um, a sidewalk to run along Montevallo and be part of this development because we do want it to be more walkable, more pedestrian for our, um, for our clients and the neighborhood.
Okay, I just want you guys to, I just want to be explicitly clear, um, that, um, in order for, um, for this to, you know, to go forward, it was my, I think it's the understanding of the community and neighborhood as well as my understanding that there in fact will be a sidewalk on the Montevallo, uh, road portion against the, um, either four-foot, six-foot or eight-foot fence, depending on what happens with you guys in a, in a ZBA.
Yes, so that, that's correct. Yes, so that's correct.
Okay, to everyone. So now we'll make a motion to table this.
Tabling this again?
Uh, yes.
Second. Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Abbott. Abbott.
All right, and it's set by Councilmember, is that Smithman?
And this is, so we're tabling so we can work through. And also, so Mr. Gambrell, you'll let me know when we come to work through everything, Law Department.
Can we take the, can we?
Okay.
Take the vote, uh, Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
No.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman? Councilmember Smithman? Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
And President Parker?
Aye, and when we bring it back, also, if you could bring up some language on how we're able to modify the agreements from the day and that kind of thing. If you don't mind. Okay, all right, next item. Madam Clerk.
Okay, the next item is item number two.
Okay.
It's a resolution relative to the application of KKR Incorporated for the transfer of an off-premise beer and wine license to be used at C Store thirteen sixteen Bestinmer Road, Suite A, Birmingham. And the hearing of our interested parties, this is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link on the agenda. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. Okay, and the audio conference number is one four one five six five five zero 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 two. Access code one eight seven six four zero five one eight five. If you are calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item.
All right, have we moved, have we motioned? Okay, I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All right, just to reiterate, all the liquor licenses we're about to go through, which is items two through seven, I believe. Excuse me, two through eight, did go before the respective parties and the neighborhood associations that they're required to. All of the items with the exception of item number seven did pass the neighborhood. So with that, is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this? Is there any member of the council that would like to speak to this?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Hoyt?
Yes, sir. Yeah, well, Mr. President, I'm, I'm really having some difficult understanding that we just did a zoning issue where we read the neighborhood's report. Because it's important that, that the citizens understand that there has been some deliberation with respect to the, the process. And we shouldn't treat the liquor license any different than that. And just say that folks voted is not providing much information about something that, that perhaps will have a long-term effect. And if it's not important, then, then why are we even read it for, for the zoning cases?
Okay.
And I just, I just believe that, what's the harm of reading it for public consumption?
All right, that's fine. India, will you please read the, I'm going to get you to read each of these since some people don't check their emails. If you'll please read item.
All right, guys. All right, all right, here we are. Let's, let's take a deep breath.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine. I mean, I'm not upset about it.
Oh, no, I'm going to get.
Hey, guys. Hey, guys, let's just, all right, let's both, all right. Counselor Williams, you're going to, you're making your presentation.
India, will you please read the neighborhood report for item two?
Absolutely, Counselor. For C Store, they visited the Bellevue Heights neighborhood on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. There were twenty-three in attendance, five opposed, fifteen were in support. And there was no reason for those five oppositions listed.
All right, back to you, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, Counselor Hoyt, you good with that?
I'm good.
Okay, all right, Madam Clerk, we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman? Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye. Yes.
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Woods? Councilmember Woods? Uh, Counsel, President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
And President Parker?
Aye. Okay, that item passes. Next item, Madam Clerk, please.
And the next item is item number three. It's on page three. A resolution relative to the application of O two twenty twenty-one LLC for the transfer of a restaurant retail liquor license to be used at Overtime Grill and Bar, one hundred Frankford Circle, Suite FNG. And the hearing of our interested parties, this is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link provided on the agenda. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio number is one four one five six five five zero 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 two. Access code one eight seven six four zero five one eight five. If you are calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, does anybody wish to speak for or against from the public? Is anybody on the council? India, if you'll please read the, the neighborhood form for item number three.
Sure, Overtime Grill and Bar visited the Oxmoor Neighborhood Association on April twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Twenty-nine were in attendance, zero opposed. And there is no reason for any opposition because there was none.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. President.
What was chatter? Is there some question? All right, ready? Uh, Adam Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard? Councilmember Hilliard? Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Oh, did I miss it? Hilliard, aye.
Okay.
Councilmember Woods?
We hear you, Counselor. We got you.
Protem Alexander?
Aye.
And President Parker?
Aye. Okay, all right, that item passes. Next item.
Madam Clerk, can you read item four and five together since it's the same location?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Item four is a resolution relative to the application of C Town Incorporated for the transfer of an off-premise beer and wine license to be used at C Town for forty-ten Messer Airport Highway, Suite B. And this is the hearing of our interested parties. Item number five is a resolution relative to the application of C Town Incorporated for the transfer of a lounge retail liquor class-two license to be used at C Town two forty-ten Messer Airport Highway, Suite Eight. And this is also a hearing of our interested parties. This is a public hearing item, but these are public hearing items. Any person who wish is to speak for or against these items may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link provided on the agenda. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio number is one four one five six five five zero 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 two. Access code one eight seven six four zero five one eight five. And if you are calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this, to these agenda items.
Move the items.
Second.
Okay.
President Parker?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt, I'm going to tag team this a little bit. Items four and five, I just got an email from Administrator, not Kid, but McDaniels, Deputy Administrator. He was saying that on item number five, there should be an A and a B. I'm just trying to make sure that the item passes correctly as far as four and five. So we need to look at both items to make sure we have the correct information as far as the application is concerned.
Mr. Frazier, that, I looked at that item and it is accurate on there, so you can disregard that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, so. Yeah, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any members of the public that wish to speak to item four and five? Are there any members of the council? Ms. Bailey, will you please read the neighborhood form?
Sure, the applicant visited the North Avondale Neighborhood Association on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Six were in attendance, zero opposed, six supported, and no opposition.
All right, thank you. Back to you, Mr. President.
All right, ready for vote, everyone? Yes, sir. Okay.
Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hilliard?
Aye.
Counselor Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Woods? Counselor Woods? President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
And President Parker?
Um, all right, okay, those items pass. Next item, Madam Clerk. Seems like. Yeah.
All right, item number six, which is on page four, is a resolution relative to the application of Boss's Private Lounge LLC for a club liquor class-two license to be used at Boss's Private Lounge, eleven seventy-nine Sixteenth Avenue West, Birmingham. And this is the hearing of our interested parties. Item number seven on page five is a resolution relative to the application of Boss's Private Lounge LLC for a Division One dance permit to be used at Boss's Private Lounge, eleven seventy-nine Sixteenth Avenue West. This is also the here, a hearing of our interested parties. These are public hearing items. Any persons who wish to speak for or against these items may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link provided on the agenda. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to these agenda items. The audio number is one four one five six five five zero 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 two. And the access code is one eight seven six four zero five one eight five. If you are calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to these agenda items.
Move the items.
Second.
Okay, Counsel Williams?
All right, is there any member of the public? Is there any member of the public that wished to speak to this? I think that we might have had somebody on the phone to speak to item six and seven. Kim and Cody, do y'all see anybody?
We're going to unmute the person who has their hand raised on the phone, but we're not sure exactly what they wanted to speak to.
Okay.
Good morning. The liquor license?
Yeah, so are you speaking on Boss's Private Lounge at one one seven nine Sixteenth Avenue West?
That's correct.
Right, go ahead. The floor is yours. If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Alonzo Darrow, President of Thomas Neighborhood Association, four twenty-fourth Street, Thomas. First of all, good morning, councils.
Good morning, good morning, sir.
We met, I think it was on the sixth of the month. And we voted against a lounge and liquor license for that place. A little history on that is this, this is the third time that they came to us for a liquor license. And this is the third time that we turned them down. The main reason that we turned them down is that this is a place where the kids get on and off the bus. This place is located on a residential street and a residential neighborhood. It does not fit any of our redevelopment plans that we have of the area. Since last year, when we turned them down on Sixteenth Avenue West, there has been about six houses where people are moving in and rehabbing houses. I know if I was buying property on Sixteenth Avenue West, I would want a club located there. Another reason that we turned them down is Thomas is saturated with places where you can get alcohol. Once you get off the interstate, coming up Archideffy Road, going west, you have three service stations, a Shear, a Chevron, and a Marathon. You can purchase alcohol beverages. You come over to the by道, or the bridge, whatever. You have a pallet, you have a Sidco service station where you can purchase alcohol beverages. Next to that, we have a, a mall. Inside this mall, we have a Cobb Michael's Lounge. Up there, we have an event center. Across the street from there, we have a circuit case where you can also purchase alcohol beverages. And it's strange that on the day when the tornado came through, we all know what happened. When the AIA came in and we did the redevelopment plan for the fat area, they also redid the one for the Thomas neighborhood. There's nowhere in our redevelopment place saying that put a lounge or a club in the middle of a neighborhood. And it's, we couldn't see whether this would even be beneficial to what we are trying to do. Those are the reasons that we said no. We told the applicants, if you go in, you put back what was there? A laundromat or a dry cleaner? You can even put a fish market there? You can even do an internet cafe there, a coffee shop, anything that would help bring the neighborhood up. And by no means do we feel that a lounge or a club is going to enhance our neighborhood. And those are the reasons that we rejected. I know on the application, I put too many lounges, enough places to buy. That's not, excuse me, but that is my fault. But I don't want you to understand, this is the third time that we are turned this down. And I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Alonzo. I appreciate you taking the time to join our meeting. I know it's frustrating trying to figure out how to do it by phone and the internet and all that, so I appreciate your time, sir. Hey, India, will you do me a favor and go ahead and read that neighborhood form since we just heard from the neighborhood president?
Yes, sir. Boss's Private Lounge visited the Thomas Neighborhood Association on April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Eleven were in, were in attendance, nine opposed. The reason for opposition, or opposition given from the neighborhood is too many clubs in this area and the neighborhood has more than enough alcohol establishments.
Thank you, ma'am. Do any members of the council wish to speak on this item?
Um, yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman and President, yeah, well, um. I, I think, um. Mr. Darrell and, and that neighborhood and, um, the Pratt City community. Spent an enormous amount of time trying to figure out. Um, what would be best for that area. Um, they have been plagued, um. With a lot of different challenges, um. Notwithstanding prostitution and other stuff that's going on in that area. Um, and so, um. Mr. Darrell and them is, you know, they have really. Um, been very studious, I guess, about, um, trying to protect the neighborhood. And it is adjacent, it is contiguous. To the residential neighborhood, and I just believe. That, um, this may not be the best, um, use. At this time, I really do, and I support the neighborhood on this. And I support, um, the time that they've invested. Uh, in trying to develop a, um. A plan, an outlay for, uh, for that neighborhood and that community.
All right, um.
Mr. President. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you, I too support Mr. Darrell and the Neighborhood Association. He is an impeccable leader in that area and takes it to heart, and I want to thank him. And the community for doing such a hard work, so at the proper time, Mr. President, I won't be in favor of this.
Thank you, sir, um, I believe that we have the applicant, Ms. Angela, uh, Gooden or Gooden on the call. Um, Kim and Cody, can we hear from her?
Ms. Gooden, you are now a panelist, so you should be able to speak.
Good morning.
Good morning, hi to everyone.
Good.
I'm fine, I'm Angela Gooden, I'm the owner of Bosses Private Lounge, I also. Own several other businesses in the city of Birmingham where I have come before the city council and got approved. Also, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Also, I have talked to several people on that.
Okay, Ms. Gooden, I think.
The lounge with only the fact that they would like to come into the lounge. Because as of now, it's private to business owners only, ages thirty five and up. For entertainment, fundraising, and rental usage. And also, I talked to all the parents that get their kids off the bus, I got them to sign a petition also. And I let them know that we will not open between the hours of three and five P M Monday through Friday. To allow the children to get off the bus safely, and I will open the gates up because I'm having gates put up. We own across the street ninety eight square feet of parking along with our parking lot. And the parents parking both of those lots, but because of the high walking and, you know, trespassing in the area. And me having to clean up the parking lot several days of all kind of chaos and. Sleeping, people sleep there and everything, so I'm going to gate it. But I did let the parents know that we will open the gates up for them between two thirty and four thirty P M. So they can park in there to pick their children up because the bus dropped on the street, and it's not a sidewalk there. So their parents have to park in the lot across the street which we own, and the parking lot where the building is in, so I told them I will. I will leave that open for them, and like I said, I talked to the people on that street and they are for it. But they would like to come, they would like to be able to access the building, rent the building, or patronage the building, I told them I'm willing to open it up to them. If approved. And our, our building is not for the public, they, um, they're really judging me on Carmichael's and the other event center. But mine is not open to the public, it's for people who own their own business only, ages thirty five and up. We only can allow forty nine people in the building at a time per regulations. And also, we do background checks on our members, they have to be business owners ages thirty five and up, so we do have rules and regulations.
May I ask you something, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Do you think, and I don't know if you, if the, uh. If Mr. Alonso is still on the phone, perhaps if you all kind of sat down and had a conversation. To talk through some of the issues, that's something that, uh. Mr. President and, and, and also with the applicant, just to sit down and have a conversation? Is that something? I don't know if. Mr. Alonso is still on the phone or not?
Yes, I'm still here.
Ask, is there, you know, I, I think. From here and just, if we delayed it and perhaps allowed you all with an opportunity just to have a conversation or meeting, uh. Both parties to sit and just. Try to have a conversation, is that something that's perhaps doable, or you're just?
The neighborhood voted no. There's no reason.
What did he say?
To need to discuss. This matter.
He said that the neighborhood voted no, nine to two, and there's no reason to continue to talk.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else on the council have any? Comments? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Abbott.
I thought I heard the applicant say that this would be an event center. Did I hear accurately that people could rent it for events? Is the applicant still on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
They, when I say running for events, a lot of my business owners that I have that are currently already members of our association. They have baby showers and things like that, so I'm not saying. Events like coming in their party and things like that, like the, like the event center across the street. Not those kind of events, they may have repasses, they may have, you know, things for the children. Outings for the children, they can do things like that, but I'm, I wasn't speaking on like parties and things like that. And I was trying to tell the Neighborhood Association these things, but I was not really given the opportunity to talk, and I was cut off several times. And really reference to the other clubs in the area, and as I spoke to my attorney, if I have to take it to court. I am not allowed, that's against regulations, to be judged on what another establishment did. And I have not been before the Neighborhood Association three times, this is my first and only time. Now, previously, it was two other businesses there before me. That wasn't me, this is my first time applying, and this is my first time coming before the city council and the Neighborhood Association.
Okay, well, I thought I understood you to say that some of the neighbors had come to see you and said they wanted to come to your club and have. Events there, so I may have just misunderstood what you said.
No, ma'am, you are, you are correct, they was asking me about having events there. Cause one person, she's getting ready to get married and she wants to have her bridal shower there in the daytime. Things like that, they were asking me about, not like parties and stuff like that. They was asking to, would they be able to rent it? And I told them, yes, they can rent it for, you know, things that I approve, and those are the things that I will approve. And I let them know that also, and I let them know that it was not open to anybody but bosses. But if I was granted permission, I will open it, open it up to the Thomas community also. For patronage and rental, if they would like to, but it have to be approved by me.
Okay, so they would become members of the private club and you wouldn't require them to own their own business and be bosses?
No, only thing that they would get is that, and they would not be proud on their own business. Their allowance would be only because they live in the Thomas community only, and they will also have to pass a background check. They will also have to be age thirty five and up, and also pass other things and pay a fee to be a member, so they will still have the same. Things that they will have to do, but instead of them owning their own business, I will allow them to attend and have. Business, you know, rental there, because they live in the Na- the Thomas community only, not outside the Thomas community.
Okay, thank you, thank you for answering my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Gooden, I have one question for you, why, if, if the intent is to host baby showers and bridal showers, why are y'all asking for a division one dance permit?
Those are one of the things that we're doing, now, when I went before them to do my application, he asked, would there be dancing in there? I told him, yes, he said, well, if there's going to be a dance floor, you have to have a dance floor permit. And I told him, you know, I agree with it.
Okay. All right, any other members of the council have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, uh.
Yes, sir.
But I, I would, uh, in the past, when there's been some. Concern about these, we've had the office of the city attorney remind us about the circumstances. Stances that qualify for us, uh, rejecting, uh, application, um. If it's possible, if they could remind us of those stipulations, I appreciate that.
All right. Anybody from city attorney's office want to speak to that?
Morning, sir, this is Melissa Smiley from the office of the city attorney, we have, um, attorney Julie Bernard standing by, and I'll have her provide you a refresher.
Thank you. Is that happening now?
Today.
Um. Counselor, I have Ms. Bernard, she's having a little technical difficulty, so I have her on a speaker. Could you repeat the question for her benefit?
Sure, Ms. Bernard, we're asking what the criteria is for the council to deny. Um, a liquor license in class one dance permit.
Okay, um, there are the seven reasons, I'm sorry, I hope I missed their feedback.
Oh, you're fine, continue, Julie.
Okay, all right, thanks, I can tell, um. See, I'm pulling it up, pulling up the statute, um, at the moment, so I'll cite it correctly. I apologize, um.
If you like Julie, you can put it in the chat, would you want to just do that?
I can do that, just give me okay, I got it, um.
Ms. Smiley, can you move her mic closer to yours?
A lot to put in the chat.
Say something, I hope they can hear you, this is like a mic check, can you hear her, okay?
If you just put it closer to your mic, you might.
Yeah, I'm not speaking at the moment, I'm pulling up, uh, the statutes, uh, so I can quote it correctly. Okay, um. The reasons are that you can deny a li- approval of a license is. The creation of a nuisance. Circumstances clearly detrimental to or which would adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare of the adjacent residential neighborhoods. A violation of applicable zoning restrictions or regulations. An individual applying for the license has a prior conviction involving the use of alcohol or a controlled substance. The proximity of the business to a school or childcare facility. And the business owners of the operation will create a harmful environment for the children. The traffic congestion created by licensing the proposed location will endanger others. And number seven is any other reason that poses a risk.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bernard, um, with that being said, um. I'd like to make a motion that we deny this application because. The potential for it to create a nuisance, uh, in the neighborhood as well as adversely affect the safety. Uh, of the neighborhood specifically citing that it is at a children, this is a, they're asking for an alcohol permit and. A division one dance permit at a, uh, specific location of a bus stop. Um, and I do think that because of the, uh, because of the neighborhood's, uh, concerns. Uh, that they have adequately voiced that this could be a harmful, uh, element in their community.
Second.
Excuse me, counselor, you don't really have to phrase it as, as a motion to deny. Uh, you've got a motion to adopt it, and all you have to do is vote against that motion to adopt, so you don't really have to. Do the opposite. Just vote on the one that you have and then.
Okay, okay, uh, yeah, I guess, uh, to articulate for court. The reason that I am voting no for this is because I feel that this is going to create a nuisance in the neighborhood. And is specifically adversely, uh, affect the safety and welfare of the children getting on and off the bus at this specific location. Uh, I think we're ready for a vote, Mr. President.
Counselor Abbott?
No.
Counselor Hillier?
No.
Counselor Hoyt?
No.
Counselor O'Quinn?
No.
Counselor Smithman?
No.
Counselor Williams?
No.
Counselor Woods? Counselor Woods? President Protem Alexander?
No.
And President Parker? President Parker?
The president has stepped away, so that is denied. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Okay, so that'll take care of items, uh, six and seven, the next item is item number eight. It's a resolution relative to the application of Lakeview Oyster House Inc. For especially license one forty, to be used at Mo's Original Barbecue Wing Fest. June twenty six, twenty twenty one, on twenty ninth Street South, from Seventh Avenue South to Eighth Avenue South, Birmingham. This is the hearing of our interested parties, this is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link provided on the agenda. Please use the hand raised function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. Uh, the audio number is one four one five six five five zero 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 two. Access code one eight seven six four zero five one eight five. If you're calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, this item is a, a special event, uh, for two locations that already hold a liquor license. Um, anybody on the public wish to speak for or against this? Any member of, um. The council wish to comment or speak on this? Hearing nobody, it is back to you, Madam Protem, for a vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, let's call for the vote, please.
Okay. Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier?
Aye.
Counselor Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Smithman? Counselor Smithman?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Woods? Still absent, uh, President Parker? Still absent, and President Protem Alexander?
Aye, that item passes, next item, ma'am clerk.
Okay, the next item is item number nine. On page six. A resolution relative to the application of Roosevelt Brock Jr. For a towing service license to be used at the Key. Center Point, Alabama, to operate one record on the streets of Birmingham.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, Madam Protem, this, uh, um, applicant had got the, the background, uh, check by, uh, Birmingham Police Department, and they did approve. Uh, this item, anybody from the public wish to speak for this? Hearing nobody, any member of the council wish to speak to this? All right, it's back to you, Madam Protam, for it.
All right, having no one from the public or any session by the council, we'll go ahead and call for this, vote for this item, please.
Okay, Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier?
About to hear.
Counselor Hillier? Okay, Counselor Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Smithman?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Woods? Still out. Uh, President Parker? President Parker, she's still out.
Counselor Hillier, aye.
Okay, thank you. And President Protam Alexander?
Aye, that item passes. We were next to item eleven, Madam Clerk.
Okay, item number eleven is on page twelve. An ordinance to further amend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one by appropriating one million five hundred thousand dollars to Enslie High School Mixed Use Redevelopment Healthy Food Option.
Move the item.
Second.
Madam?
Yes.
Now, which item? My iPad went out on me.
Well, item number eleven, page twelve.
Is that one with the grocery store?
Yes, sir, Enslie High School appropriating that capital fund.
All right, very good, thank you.
All right, any discussion or any presentation from staff needed on this one? I believe it's been delayed before. Any discussion from any of the counselors on this item? And we'll go ahead and call for it.
Okay, Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier?
Aye.
Counselor Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Smithman?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Woods?
Aye.
President Parker? And President Protam Alexander?
Aye, that item passes. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the next item is item number twelve. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute, one, a redevelopment agreement with Zimmerman Properties, S E L L C, a North Carolina limited liability company here and out of, under which the redeveloper will develop property known as the former Enslie High School, located at twenty-three oh one Avenue J, for mixed-use development, and the city shall convey the redevelopment property to the developer for a purchase price of fifty thousand dollars, which the city has determined to be the use value of the redevelopment property as defined in Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section twenty-one, four dash two dash six eight, and shall further provide certain incentives in the form of a city grant of up to one million five hundred thousand dollars in connection with the project, and that providing the city grant will promote the economic development of the city, constitutes a public purpose, and is authorized by, consistent with and in furtherance of the objectives of the Amendment Number seven seven two. And this is the second reading of this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselors, this was deferred from four twenty to this meeting on four twenty-seven. Do we need another presentation? What is your pleasure, or do we have any comments or questions additionally on this item for members of the council?
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hoyt?
Excuse me, can I get a motion first?
I'm sorry.
Approval, a move approval.
Second.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Hoyt.
Yeah, well, Madam President, I appreciate the efforts. You know, I, and I say this, and, and really in concern for the, for the community. But we just spent an enormous amount of money on developing tuxedo terrorists. And one of the reasons why we did that when I worked for the Housing Authority is to deconcentrate the poverty, because there was such crime that was happening in that community, in that development. Every other day, somebody was getting killed, or getting shot, or getting something. And it was because we had just too many people in one area. And it was inundated. You know, it was just too condensed. And so, and so, we made a decision when I worked for the Housing Authority in planning and development, that one of the things we would do is come back and lower the density of the site, and then to come back and build single-family detached homes. This proposal is to put the same amount of folk or units that we took out of the project back into an area that is contiguous to this development, which means that we're gonna concentrate poverty in an area that's already has experienced that. I mean, that's, you know, ends and speaks for itself in regards to that. And I thought, and it's my opinion, that we need more single-family detached homes there. And what developers proposing to do is do stack housing, homeownership, you know, that's, that's really not the best and highest use for that site. I think when you have that kind of property in a, in a city, we should maximize our efforts. And, you know, multifamily, generally, persons who live there are transient. You know, they, they move in and out, but you know, when you got somebody that got a home, got an investment, and, you know, then, you know, they have some ownership, and it's a little more stable than just multifamily. And so, just given the history of that community, the crime rate is still high in that community. We really want to promote homeownership. I appreciate the efforts, but I'm a housing professional and a planner. And this is not good planning, if you ask me. I do believe that multifamily has a place, but I don't think this is the best use for this property. And I just believe that we can do better. And, you know, we are building homes, we're building townhouses, condominiums, and other places. But you want to give us apartment, we just approved a developer's agreement, and we amended the agreement to not to do apartments. But this is your first order of business to put apartments and on this school site. You know, it's, you know, and there's a distinct economy in how we view the black community. And I have to say that because I see it every day. I have represented this community for over sixteen years, both as a counselor, patron counselor, and as a a neighborhood and community officer. And I just think that we can do better. And it's not gonna help us when you put that concentration of people in that same area. You know, that we spent millions of dollars trying to, we did the same thing at Love and Village, trying to, I mean, to lower the density, and so that we can have some sense of community. You know, some sense of green space and all of that. It's just, it's just not a good fit. And, but I realized, you know, you all have the votes, and that's fine. But I'm gonna stand by conviction. I'm gonna stand by what I know is best for this community. And, and I just don't think this is premier planning for this community. You know, I'm not opposed to the, to the grocery store, I think, you know, that drives the market, you know, competition drives the market. But to utilize this property primarily for two hundred and forty-four units, I believe, is an indictment on the quality of life of those persons who live in and around. This is a residential area, quite frankly, and you have some homeowners there. And I know that some say it with homeowners, okay, where they don't really understand planning as I do, because you got to go to school to understand that. But, but I represent the area. And I'm vehemently opposed to the plan that we have for this site.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. And I would just like to say, I appreciate your comments, the experience you have with this, the background that you have in the planning, and just the desire again to be sure that this is an area that's comparable to enhancing our neighborhoods, bringing in families, people who are gonna, our neighborhoods over a long period, creates ownership of the neighborhood. So it enhances the neighborhood itself and improves the quality of life for those residents. Let me ask if any other counselors have a comment? And I don't know if we need to go back and look at the, what the developer or the redeveloper wanted to offer. I do know we did have some conversation on the number of units, I believe, and whether they were stack houses and that type of thing. Any other counselors have any comments before we move any further?
Yeah, yeah, I would say that I've had a chance to view it several times with the neighborhood president there in that area, George McCoy, and several others out in that area. It's come through economic development, we've looked at it. I think it is, it's a beautiful project. I would like to see it happen, and I would be in favor of it.
Any other comments? Before I call for the vote, I am gonna say again, I appreciate your comments, Counselor Hoyt, because it's been interesting today. I've seen us put in certain conditions where we want it for the neighborhood. I've had a learning lesson here today of just what we want to see in certain neighborhoods, and what we want to see in other neighborhoods. And I value that comment and that sentiment. And so I thank you. If we're ready now to call for the vote, we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
And, and Madam President, just before you do that, I want you, you all to understand, we spent of city dollars, nine million dollars for infrastructure for tuxedo. And we have built the homes and still got some homes to develop, single-family detached. And, and really, it's well-kept, and there's a sense of ownership in that community. And the fact that we spent about fifty million, I think it's forty-five million dollars attached to that. So we spent roughly about sixty million, close to six million dollars for that development. So, you know, homeownership would have been better. But, you know, I realize that we don't have a high regard when we're planning in black communities. And I just, you know, my heart bleeds, because I know that we can do better. I know we can do better. So, thank you, and I appreciate your comments. I appreciate Counselor Hillier's, I mean, you know, and it's, you know, and for me, it's not just housing. It's homeownership, it's ownership of that community, to stabilize that community, because we know, I don't have to tell anybody, you know, when you do apartments, they are transient. Yeah, they stay for a little bit, and they move right on out. And that doesn't give us much hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. We'll go ahead and call for the vote, please.
Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier?
Aye.
Counselor Hoyt?
Resounding no.
Counselor O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Smithman? Counselor Smithman? I see you, Counselor, your phone is muted.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Woods?
Uh, it's not muted, yes.
I got you. President Parker, are you back? And President Protam Alexander?
Yes. That item passes. Next item, please.
Okay, the next item is item number thirteen, on page thirteen. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an amended redevelopment agreement with Alabama School of Fine Arts Foundation, under which a redevelopment agreement between the city and Alabama School of Fine Arts Foundation, dated December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, pursuant to which Alabama School of Arts Foundation purchased and agreed to redevelopment property consisting of a ten thousand three hundred sixty-seven square foot building located at eight twenty eighteen Street North, will be amended to extend the commencement and completion dates for the redevelopment project, and to make other revisions and corrections to the redevelopment agreement. And two, an amendment to covenants, under which corresponding amendments will be made to the covenant set forth in the deed to the property. And this is the second reading of the item. We need a motion? A move approval. Abbott?
Second. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. This item was again held over from our last meeting to this meeting. And we had some questions and discussions about the agreement and the items that were being proposed. Counselors, what is your pleasure this time? Does any counselor have any further discussion? Or do we need additional presentation? Or the reason that we held this over? Any counselors?
Vote.
What was that, Mr. Hillier, was the vote?
Yes, let's vote.
All right. So we'll go ahead and call for the vote. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier?
Aye.
Counselor Hoyt?
Abstain.
Okay. Counselor Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Williams?
Abstain.
Counselor Woods?
Aye.
Counselor, okay. Uh, President Parker? Counsel President Protam Alexander?
Aye. That item passes. We're keeping up with the enough votes.
Okay. All right. The next item is item number fourteen. An ordinance approving the execution and recording of a declaration and restrictions for property located at twelve thirty-one and twelve thirty-five Twenty-third Street South, Birmingham, modifying the application of a settlement agreement and releasing covenants recorded in the probate records of Justin County, Alabama, and authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents. This is an item of permanent operation, so we're gonna need unanimous consent to take the item up today.
I move for unanimous consent.
Second.
Okay.
We call for it.
Counselor number Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier?
Aye.
Counselor Hoyt?
No.
Counselor O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Smithman?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Woods? Counselor Woods?
Aye.
President Parker? And President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
All right, we have one no vote on that, so it'll have to be held over.
Thank you. So we'll delay that item and hold it over without unanimous consent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hey, the next item, the item number, let me see. Thirty-seven. And item thirty-seven is on page twenty-three. Okay, thirty-seven is a resolution setting a public hearing May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one to consider the adoption of a vacation. I'm sorry, adoption of a resolution assenting to a vacation for a thousand five hundred thirty-five square feet of right-of-way along Ninth Court North between Fiftieth Street North and Fifty-first Street North on behalf of Jose A. Casanova and Danny Summer- Summerlin owners, so that the owner can consolidate property, and this is case number S U B twenty twenty-one zero 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 eighteen. In the event that the governor's proclamation is extended beyond May seventh, the council meeting and this hearing will be held virtually via Cisco WebEx. To participate in this meeting, you will need to follow the link provided below or use the call-in information provided. This link will also be available for public participation even if the council meets in the council chambers. If you would like to attend via your computer, you will click on the link that will be provided on the agenda. If you would like to attend via phone, you will dial one four one five six five five zero 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 two and then enter one eight seven one one four zero five two five hashtag. If you have joined by computer and wish to speak to the item, please use the raise hand button in the WebEx application. If you have joined by phone, you will be given the opportunity to speak after recognition of the speakers using the online platform. If you have joined the meeting by telephone and would like to request to speak, dial star three when prompted during the hearing. Please be patient. Speakers will be given the usual three minute, minutes limit for comments. And if you have any questions about participation in one of, in one of these hearings, you may contact the council's public information office by emailing Kimberly dot Garner at Birmingham A L dot G.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So do we have a motion to set this public hearing for May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. You call for the vote, Madam Clerk?
Aye.
For any discussion, I guess. We're just setting the public hearing.
Ma'am, so that one. Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier? Counselor Hillier? Counselor Hoyt?
Um, abstain.
Counselor O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Smithman?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Woods?
Aye.
Counselor, uh, um, Council President Parker? And President Protem Alexander?
Aye. So that item passes. We've set that hearing for May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. And we did have the emergency purchase notice, item thirty-eight. Any other items left on a addendum? Did all of those, um, addendum?
Uh, we have a couple left. Let me, if you don't mind, let me read item thirty-eight. Uh, thirty-eight is receiving the emergency purchase notice from the purchasing agent relative to the purchase of temporary fencing required at a vacant lot located at eight zero one Eighth Avenue West Birmingham during the Magic City Classic. And we also have two more items on the addendum. That will be item number forty-two-two on the addendum. I think that's the first addendum.
And as you read those, um, Cody, could you get those on screen for us, please? Or Ms. Garner?
Yes, once, give us one second, please.
Sure.
Okay, that's, uh, item number forty-two, and it's on the third page of that first addendum that you received. Uh, item forty-two is an ordinance pursuant to Alabama Act nineteen sixty-nine dash nine sixteen authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement for a period of three years between the city of Birmingham and Bellevue State Community College for clinical affiliation to allow clinical education students attending Bellevue State Community College to volunteer to work with the Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service. The clinical affiliation will provide the students an opportunity to gain experience and educational knowledge while providing assistance to the Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service. This is an item of public, of permanent operation, so we will need unanimous consent to take up the item today.
Move the item.
Move for unanimous, second.
It's been moved and properly second. Now we'll call the vote for unanimous consent.
All right. Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier? Counselor Hillier? Counselor Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Smithman?
Yep.
Counselor Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Woods?
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Parker? President Protem Alexander?
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll be, uh, now we'll be taking up.
Yes, and that's item number forty-two. I just want to be sure Cody's kind of getting us on the screen. Be clear what we're voting on. All right, item number forty-two.
So yes, now, now we need a motion to adopt the actual ordinance.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. Any questions regarding this item or discussion? I guess we need someone to present to us actually what we're doing here with this item, please. We have anyone from staff just to talk about the linkage and program that we're proposing with Bellevue State? If it's self-explanatory and there are no questions, does anyone have any questions regarding this item? All right, we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Yes, ma'am. One second, sorry, lost some spot.
You're good.
Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier? Counselor Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Smithman? Counselor Smithman?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor, I got you. Thank you. Counselor Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Woods?
Aye.
Uh, President Parker? Uh, President Protem Alexander?
Aye. That item passes. Next item.
Okay, the next item is item number forty-three. An ordinance pursuant to Alabama Act nineteen sixty-nine dash nine sixteen authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement for a term not to exceed six months between the city of Birmingham and the Jefferson County Department of Health, for the city to appropriate and donate to the board the sum of a thousand dollars to assist in paying costing curve for the household hazardous waste day event, which is offered to protect the local environment by providing citizens of the city and of Jefferson County an opportunity to dispose of household hazardous items safely, including electronics, paper for on-site shredding, pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers, household cooking grease, paint, tires, appliances, prescription drugs, ammunition, and batteries. And this is an item of permanent operation, so we're gonna need, uh, a unanimous consent to take up this item today.
Move for you, Se.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. We'll take the vote for unanimous consent.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier? Counselor Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor O'Quinn? Counselor Smithman? Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Woods?
Aye.
Counsel, uh, Council President Parker? President Protem, oh, you're back, okay. Uh, I got you. All right, all right. And President Protem Alexander?
Aye. So now, a motion for the item, correct?
Yes, ma- yes, ma'am.
Moved.
Second.
Removed and properly second. Any questions regarding item number forty-three or discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier, okay.
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Woods?
Aye.
President Parker? And President Protem Alexander?
Aye, that item passes. Is that the last on our agenda, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am, that's the last one.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, counselors, I'd like to ask, does anyone have any announcements regarding upcoming committee meetings?
Madam Protem, I think we need to go back to the table item.
Oh, that's right. I'm so sorry. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Then, uh, we need a vote to take the item up from the table.
Motion.
Is there a second? Bring that back up.
Second, second.
Second.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
President Parker? President Protem Alexander?
Aye. So we had tabled this item, right, there was, um, to be discussion and we were, uh, trying to get some consensus, I believe, from O C A and anyone else that could give us some guidance on that, I believe, the items that we were adding. Did we have that discussion? I know Mr. Parker left out that sort of, and council administrators were working on that, staff.
Uh, Counselor Alexander?
Yes, speak on this.
We did, this is Tim Gambrell, serving chief planner for the city of Birmingham. We did, uh, have some discussions, and I think there were two items that we discussed that, one, um, you know, if we do add the Q condition today, um, and approve that, we would need to bring it back at June first to ratify that decision. Um, and secondly, uh, if we do prohibit the use, we'd like to use the terminology that's in the zoning ordinance and say that we're gonna prohibit the use of dwelling multifamily. And then that would cover, I think, the concern that we have from the counselor.
Okay, so what we're voting on then is to add that terminology, prohibit use of the dwelling multifamily. That is proposal that we'd be adding to this item?
We would add it as a Q condition to the ordinance, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then in the last with the Q conditions, then, uh, we would be bringing the item back June first.
We would, we would submit an item, we would submit an item tomorrow for next week's, uh, city council agenda on May fourth. That item would set a public hearing for June first, and then that item on June first would be a public hearing for the same case that would include the Q condition added today. And at that time, uh, that, that would be a final decision from the city council.
All right, thank you. Having the report back from staff and, um, what's being proposed with the item, is there any further discussion by council members?
I have a, a question for the, uh, O C A. If, if the two parties are agreeing on the change of language, why do we have to? I mean, the threat of litigation is almost none, so why do we have to, um, why do we have to delay this four weeks for them?
Counselor, this is, um, Melissa Smiley speaking from the Office of the City Attorney. Um, the purpose for the delay would be to publish the ordinance. What has been published does not include those Q conditions, and there's, um, statutory authority as well as a Supreme Court decision that the, the zoning ordinance is not valid if what is published is different than what is actually approved. So the idea of you advancing something today and then bringing it back before the council on June first is so that we produce a valid ordinance, ordinance.
And, okay, so since, since I've served, we haven't done that. So when did the Supreme Court? Is this new?
No, sir, I do understand that previously there may have been a different mode of operating, but what I'm understanding from my team is that on the latest cases we've had, this has been the protocol. If you'd like some examples, we can provide those to you.
No, I, I just don't, I just don't understand the over, you know, looking into this, but anyway, that's a different, that's a whole different thing. I, incidentally, I looked in AMIT, in Alabama League of Municipalities says otherwise, but, um, all right, yeah, I'd like to make a motion um, that, uh, that we, uh, add the prohibited use of dwelling multifamily.
Excuse me, Counselor Williams, before you do that, you've already got that motion on the table from previously, so it's already that motion to amend and add that additional Q condition you've already, so it's already here. We just have to vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought Tim Gambrell told me to specify the prohibited use of dwelling multifamily instead of apartments, so, um.
We just changed the wording.
Okay.
The wording, and it'll cover the same thing, so all we have to do is vote on that, that motion that you've already made to amend it, and then we'll go from there.
Um, all right.
But the yes will also include setting those Q conditions and the need to re-publish this again, correct?
Yes.
No, that actually, I think it will be a separate issue, correct, uh, Attorney Smiley?
Um, yes, we, we, they can move forward, but we're saying that this won't be final until it's been voted on by the council on June first and pub- and republished.
Okay, so that'll be a whole separate resolution setting up, setting that hearing. So that, that'll be a separate item that'll be coming up. I don't think it can.
Go ahead, who's asking the question?
Uh, this is Counselor O'Quinn, so, um, just hearing the, uh, developers' concerns and wanting to go ahead and get started with construction, uh, what is the, the pathway to, um, allowing them to proceed and not delaying them any further? Uh, I'm concerned that if we attach this, um, amendment, um, that the ordinance is not going to be valid and, and, uh, they might find, um, some obstacle to, to getting started, um, after being much delayed, so, um, if we pass it with the amendment, will they be allowed to get permits and proceed with construction? Or would that be delayed until after the June vote? Or would that be delayed until after June vote?
Right, they, they would be delayed to seek permits until the June. But they will be, the other item that is gonna be before them is a case before zoning Board of Adjustment that they're gonna have to go through. And so we've advised them that they can apply for the ZBA. But they won't be heard before the ZBA until this case is, until the current zoning case is settled on June first. So they would have the benefit of making their application, visiting and presenting to the neighborhood, and they would be prepared to be heard by the zoning Board of Adjustment at the earliest date after this case is disposed of.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. Does that answer your question, Dr. O'Quinn, or give you some guidance?
Yes, I, I think it does. And I'd like to offer to Counsel Williams that, you know, there's another option is to proceed with the zoning change as proposed and ask the developer to file for a subsequent zoning change that would add that Q condition separately. But, you know, my, just based on their experience prior to this point and not wanting them to be delayed any further, you know, my concern is, is if we attach the amendment, which I totally get and agree with. But, you know, I, I don't want them to be delayed in, in getting the required permitting for starting construction.
Is the applicant on the call still?
Counselor, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Gambrell, while we wait.
I would just, yeah, I would just mention that they won't be able to get building permits until they're be heard by ZBA anyway.
But the ZBA being heard by ZBA is contingent upon getting this zoning case passed. So if we could get the zoning passed today, then they can go ahead and go before ZBA. But if we don't, if we pass it with the amendment, it has to come back in June. And then there's sometime in, you know, late June, July before they go before ZBA.
Yeah, and then, but if you also pass it today, there's no reason that they would have to come back unless they just decide to.
And did the developers ever get on the line or did they have any other comments they wanted to? I believe the outstanding question was, were they willing to go with the additions or the information that we're trying to add?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Gambrell.
Well, I was just gonna say that I did speak to them and they, they agree and understand the process. They agree with and understand the process.
Right, any other further questions? Did I hear you? Yeah, yes.
Yeah, well, I, I think this is case in point. We're in a full-fledged debate about the abatement of the apartments. And we just experienced, you know, the concerns that I raised and no debate at all. And I'm just, you know, this, you know, I guess it's a tale of two cities. And, and I don't like the one that we just did because we ought to have a high regard for the black community too. So I, you know, but this, this, this is the point. And I have no problem in, in extracting the apartments from that because, you know, you know, this community deserves to have that choice, just as my community deserved to have better choices. But we don't have better planners because they don't seem to plan extensively around our communities at all. That's an administration problem. And I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. Any other questions? Are we ready to call for the vote?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Okay, so this is on the motion to amend the Q conditions.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Hoyt.
Yes.
Counselor O'Quinn.
Yes.
Counselor Smithman.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Woods. Counselor Woods. Counsel President Parker. And President Potem Alexander.
Aye, so that motion passes.
Yes, ma'am, now you're gonna have to take the vote on adopting it as, as amended.
And so.
Second.
Okay.
It's been moved and properly second. Any further discussion or questions? Here we know, we'll call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Counselor Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Hoyt.
Yes.
Counselor O'Quinn.
Yes.
Counselor Smithman. Counsel, Counselor Smithman. Counselor Williams.
Aye.
Counselor Woods. Counselor Woods. President Parker. And President Potem Alexander.
Aye, that item passes. Thank you all very much. And I believe now that does conclude all of our items. Ma'am, all right. So now I will go back to calling for anyone that has any announcements regarding meetings. Meeting, meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Hoyt.
Uh, thank you. Just wanted to remind you all that we are having our District Eight Town Hall meeting this evening at six-thirty. And you're able to, to link on, it's on the website. But you can join us by Zoom or Facebook Live. But we are looking for you all to, to come and participate. And we have Sheriff Petway, just to mention a few. Mr. Greg Silas, who heads up our emergency management group, Communication District. Mr. Frank Martin with the Transit Authority, Mr. Nick Sellers with the World Games Attorney, Courtney French, entrepreneur. And we have Lilo Hackett with the, with the Fair Housing Development. So, and he's just to name a few. But, but we should have a packed house via Zoom, so. Asking you all.
All right, well, thank you. And then again, the DA Town Hall, and that'll be at six-thirty, and we can get on by Zoom, Facebook. And so we look forward, sounds like we got a great round of presenters, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and they can call in too, so.
All right, perfect. And I know that information is on our council page as well. Thank you. The other announcements, Ms. Abbott?
One, one other thing, at committed the whole, I know the president's not here, but could, could we get some, some clarity on these marijuana pardons and what have you? Because it's really conflicting and, and, and we could get some stats on the crime rate in, in Birmingham. And so if we could add that to the agenda, it would be appreciated by all, really. So we can understand what that looks like.
Thank you. I'll be sure to get that message to Mr. Parker so we can get that added to our agenda. Thank you. Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to announce that the next virtual budget and finance meeting will be held on May tenth, twenty-twenty-one at three-thirty PM. Submissions are due on May fifth, twenty-twenty-one by twelve noon. There are no exceptions, so I hope everybody gets their information. But you have a lot of time because May fifth is Cinco de Mayo, and I know that you'll remember that automatically. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I always remember May fifth, that's the day I retired from my job, so it was a great celebration. I never. So we got something, we'll always be celebrating, thank you. All right, well, thank you all very much. Do I have a call, a motion for adjournment? If there are no other, oh, Dr. O'Quinn, I'm sitting with your finger up, go ahead. Sorry, sorry.
Yes, I just had a quick question. So it's my understanding that there's a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for three-thirty tomorrow afternoon, is that correct?
I did come across my calendar. I wanted to confirm though with Mr. Parker.
I haven't heard about that. Wait, what?
There was one, an invitation that came out in some means or another that indicated we would do for a meeting. Let me confirm with Mr. Parker, and then can we all get back to each of our offices via email or telephone?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you for bringing that up, Ms. O'Quinn.
Madam Potem.
Mr. Williams, you take us out.
I heard Cheryl Kidd's voice.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Kidd, go ahead.
Yes, hi, I wanted to just say that I would work with you to get that confirmed and then we will get it out. I think the standard meeting, we had not been asked to prepare and afford, so I will follow up with you on it also.
Appreciate that. And so we'll look for that communication to come from you as well, Ms. Kidd, thank you.
Is the meeting phantom?
It was on a prior calendar and we got a reminder. So we just need to confirm with Mr. Parker his wishes. I don't think I'm seeing some no's, like, not time for it. So we'll be sure, we'll talk back to Mr. Parker. Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
Ms. Seeger, Ms. Seeger's trying to speak.
I'm sorry, go ahead, who's speaking?
Hi, my name is Marie Seegers, I'm with Red Mountain Theater Company, and I had been working with Greg Stanley and India about getting on the agenda, and so I guess I thought I was gonna be at the end, so I'm not anywhere on it.
No, you were.
Your item has passed.
You passed.
I stayed this whole time and learned so much from y'all, so yay, I'm good to go.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna pull all our legs on that one, but anyway.
Thank y'all.
Thank you all.
All right.
We have the business.
I, I have a motion to adjourn.
So that's your, that's your thing, Doc?
I've got a headache by eleven fifty.
All of us in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll have a good day.
Very much, everyone have a good day. Thank you.